The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have a motion to approve today's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Public comments. Any public comments regarding anything other than what's on the agenda for today? Yes?
How come you didn't have the Drainage meeting at 8:30? How come it wasn't like at the one with 11 o'clock? So how are people supposed to know?
They're district, or different districts. So, we just set them up and we started at 8:30 this morning with Drainage District 22. And we can't get them all done at the same time. They meet, we have them separately in case landowners within those districts want to come. So then at 11:00, we'll have another one for DD 167, which involves different landowners.
But how is the public supposed to know what you guys are doing?
It's all put on our website.
There's a separate agenda for those as well.
But now again, people don't all have your website and people don't all get your papers.
They're posted on the board.
Or computers, so how again are we supposed to know?
They're all...
You assume you're doing everything at 10 o'clock or thereafter. So, why aren't you doing everything at 10 o'clock or thereafter?
Because it's scheduled earlier.
Yeah.
The landowners received a written notice of these meetings in the mail.
But we didn't, well...
You're not a landowner.
You're not a landowner, so you wouldn't really...
I own some land.
Not in this district. We are the trustees of that district, not as supervisors as trustees.
So, the general public?
Everybody's welcome to the meeting.
But they're again, like...
But it's only for their district.
Any decisions we would make regarding a repair or anything within a single drainage district, we would only acknowledge the comments from the actual landowners that are paying the bills for that district when we would make, when we consider for making any decisions on whether or not to spend the money. We take in their opinions.
But I'd like to know that and know how that all runs and how that all operates.
You can always call, I'm the drainage clerk, you can always call me with questions. But it's not, it's not...
I don't want to have to come to you. I want to come to the meetings and know what's all going on.
Well, then come at 8:30.
Yeah, you're gonna have to start coming at 8:30.
I don't have the computer system to know this.
Every library in the state of Iowa has a computer bank for everybody to go in and use.
To do what?
Every library in the state of Iowa has computers for the public to go in and use.
I don't run to town every time to do that. This is the first time I've been to town in 10 days.
You were here last week, but...
Okay, seven days. Excuse me, seven days.
Pauline, these are Drainage District meetings.
I'm not going to come.
Are you aware of all the township meetings that they have? Pleasant Township, Hardin Township? It's the same, it's the same scenario.
This goes through the Board of Supervisors.
As trustees.
I'd like to know everything that goes through the Board of Supervisors.
Then you would either have to come, look on the board upstairs to see what the agenda is,
like I said, I only come once a week.
Or make a phone call. She just gave you that option. Are you saying that you want us to call you for every meeting we're gonna have? Is that what you're asking?
I think citizens need to make some effort into finding out what goes on with their government also. We can't send a personal letter out to every county resident every time we have a meeting. I mean, I'm just, I'm sorry. But by law, we're posting the meetings on the bulletin boards. We're posting them on our website, newspapers if we can, I'm not sure, but newspapers all know about the meetings. And so we're complying with the law. We just, there's, it's not feasible to notify every...
What's wrong with scheduling it, you know, like at 1 o'clock or something? Or why was this one so early?
What's wrong with it being scheduled at 8:30?
It's not part of the regular Drainage, or regular board meeting. This is a Drainage meeting. These are separate meetings.
And there are some drainage districts that have their own trustees. See, we're not operating as county supervisors during Drainage meetings. We're acting as trustees of those individual drainage districts. It just so happens that the Board of Supervisors, if there are no elected, separate elected trustees in a Drainage district, then that becomes one of our responsibilities. And we have to act as trustees and not as a county Board of Supervisor.
So there was no trustees over this part?
Right.
We are acting as trustees.
Yeah, we do have Drainage districts that have their own elected trustees. So those meetings don't get posted anywhere. And they're conducted under the same laws and regulations as, as the trustee meetings that we have here for those Drainage districts.
They would be posted. I just don't know where they're posted.
But I don't know where those are posted either.
Okay.
Any other public comments? Okay. Approval of the minutes from July 18th, 2018 meeting?
Move to approve.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of, approval of claims for payment of July 25th?
Move to approve.
I will second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Utility permits in Secondary Roads Department.
We have one utility permit.
All right.
Motion to approve the Hardin County Utility Permit application by Heart of Iowa Communications Cooperative for the purposes of pouring 1.25 inch HDPE duct along the east side of County Highway S-55 crossing the highway to a green bin site located Section 3 and 4 Providence Township.
Okay, I will second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Taylor?
So the pavement is going to Ackley from here. They just got done with their shoulder widening this morning, so they're working on some of the intersections now, so things are going good though. Same company now that will be here for a while, so they won't ever want to stop. It'll just be a constant movement, so things should progress quickly. The Culver South Marlin Winter is almost done, so then they'll have an access again finally to the W. Happy.
Good.
So I'd address...
Good. All right. Review and Consider Iowa DOT Agreement for the City Bridge Federal Aid Swap Funding?
So the very second paragraph in this talks about how it rescends our original agreement because they switched it from federal funding to the swap funding. So, it's pretty much the exact same agreement, just with different numbers on it. So I'll have to take it to Alden again and have him sign it too.
Okay.
Do you want to explain the federal to the swap?
How much time you got?
Short version.
So essentially, in our bridge, we have a special like Bridge Replacement Fund. And for years, Hardin County gets about 350 grand a year. And for years, it's been coming from the federal funds. And then, there's a lot of paperwork involved when you're dealing with federal money. So the state and the county engineers decided that we would give the state that money and then the state would give us the exact dollar amount back. So it's the same amount of money, just state money instead of federal money.
Okay.
But it caused headaches switching too, so...
It also, we don't have to follow the federal standards. We can follow state standards in a lot of cases, which could be more efficient to the projects.
Very.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to make the motion to approve the review and consideration of the Iowa DOT Agreement for the City Bridge Federal Aid Swap Funding.
And I will second it. Any other discussion? And this is the, the bridge that's in the city of Alden, correct? Okay. Donna?
Which regulations are harder to follow, state or federal?
Federal, big time.
But state of course is still same.
Yeah. We'd say, we'd still have those regardless. We have the fences, just, and there's just more on top of it too.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. And we have the same, review and consider for Hardin County Final Plans for Bridge Replacement. Oh, this is a different bridge. This is southwest of Eldora, correct?
This is the one west of United Flare.
Okay.
So Bruce has it all drawn up. This is our first swap project we will do. So the first letting date we can do is October. That was kind of what they had decided that'd be the switch. So, this for Bruce's is gonna be 130-foot concrete bridge. So we're hoping, we made it free working days during the winter, hoping that maybe we can get, since the road is closed, you know, it's kind of, it's not a situation we like. So, we're trying to encourage them to want to come in in the winter. So, that was our hope in doing that.
Okay.
Making a motion to approve the review and consideration of Hardin County Final Plans for Bridge Replacement Project BROS-SWAP-CO4290-FE42.
I will second it. Any discussion? Donna?
I looked at this and I tried really hard to figure out where the heck it was. How do you tell?
That map on the bottom left there. It's, it's circled and the line goes off to the side there, right to the right of the map, where it says that it's a proposed continuous bridge. If you follow that line to there.
I'm not, I wasn't, I wasn't born and raised here and I don't know every...
So here's Eldora.
Yeah.
This is Eldora, the highway south.
What identifies that as Eldora?
The shape right here, I just don't know the shape.
Yeah. It says Eldora on top, like me and Bruce.
Oh yeah, it says Eldora right here. This is a...
And isn't there, aren't there highway numbers on there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I try to do the same thing that Bruce does every time. I try to, you try to find the nearest city that way, you know, as long as that's in the map, you have a general idea of how to find it.
Can I ask a favor?
Yeah.
Little paragraph in there, south of Eldora, something? For those of us that aren't that familiar?
Well, then up in the top middle, underneath the bigger print, it says 260th Street from T Avenue, West 700 Feet. That's another little, yeah, you'd still need to get out a map to find it.
And I do that at home sometimes with various things. I have to get out my map, my, with my streets for the county.
Somewhere on there.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Request for part-time employee auditor's office. Okay. There you go. We've had a request from County Auditor Jessica Lara regarding the hiring of some part-time help. We've, we've had discussions in the past or requests for additional help with employees in that office due to the increase of drainage in, in Hardin County. Drainage repairs, drainage replacements, that type of thing. Tina handles that in the, in the auditor's office and she also does real estate. And with all the increased in activity in drainage, she's not always able to get her real estate job kept up to date. Is that correct, Tina?
Yeah, officially, yeah.
Okay. So there has been a request and so Jessica is just officially requesting whether or not she would be able to hire a part-time position, which would be kept under 30 hours a week for that position.
So this position may focus on property maintenance?
Real estate.
Real estate. Right. This is a, a letter from BJ. I asked that he send his comments to Nancy regarding this subject as, after I saw that it was on the agenda. He just says he thought, he, he has thought about the needs for additional help and would like to streamline processes in order for the people to work most effectively. He would appreciate focusing on a single full-time employee on drainage matters and billing individual districts for the time spent working on the districts. With that being said, I would then suggest a single part-time employee backfilling the work that the single full-time employee performing drainage would be expected to do. Auditor Lara has identified the need to maintain continuity of operations and our current Drainage clerk is working our hardest to keep over 200 drainage districts in order. I would like to know if the Drainage Clerk position warrants enough work consistently to maintain a full-time employee and if we have the ability to access for those services required. Secondly, he would like to know the logistics of the position, including who provides oversight and accommodations. Lastly, I would prefer to consult with Mike Galloway on how we would transition or create the new position, knowing that it ultimately creates a new position that there may be some legal hurdles to jump. As a whole, I believe we have come to the point where we need to fish or cut bait and our Drainage District consumers deserve the time and attention that these costly assessments deserve. So I think, I think we agree that, that there's gonna need to be some changes, whether that's additional help. Well, I think it's going to include additional help, in my opinion. Whether or not Tina would be, if there's enough in drainage to be a full-time employee, I'm, I'm not fully convinced of that yet. That's something I think that could be, we can, we can do a trial period. I mean, if we had a part-time employee and we find that there, it is a full-time job for drainage, we can take further action later, but I don't know. What are your thoughts?
Well, for the last few years, drainage has picked up quite a bit. Whether it's doing new, new replacement or repairs, the tile's 100 years old, roughly in the ground, constantly coming out with every different idea you can from every different district. Some of the things that we hire a drainage engineer to do and charge the districts could possibly be picked up by the Drainage Clerk having given enough time, which would save the, the district's money in the long run, but in the same token, you would be charging Tina's time versus the drainage engineer's time. The drainage engineer's time is $110 an hour.
Yeah, I think that's what he...
$110, $120.
Yeah. And a lot of these answers could probably be answered with a clerk giving more time. You don't want real estate to fall behind and you don't want drainage to fall behind. Drainage is very important in this county. It covers 49.8% of the county. So at least half the county is in, or almost half the county is in drainage districts. With that being said, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of back paperwork, a lot of history that we've been doing and changing, moving stuff to computers, so that things can be easily, easily accessed, saving time and money again to the consumer, a one-time cost versus an every-time cost. I think as a part-time position, we're not, we're not adding another full-time employee, which is benefits and everything else. Part-time would be as needed. And different times of the year, it depends. Some years, you might not have a lot of work, some years, but in the last five, I know you have. Seven you have. Well, you haven't, but you haven't been here that long. And to take some of the cost off of the landowners as far as the attorney and being able to have a Drainage Clerk pick it up, I think it's important. I also believe that if this person could also be cross-drained in drainage, it benefits us as well, since I do know we've had meetings where if you're sick, we don't have a lot of information and nobody to get us the information. That's, that's a tough, tough one for the landowners. When, when you talk drainage in general, water, they call when water's not flowing and they want it flowing today. And that's important as well. There's a lot of money that sits in those fields that they want drained or backing up in people's houses. It, it's very important to everybody. So I, I'm okay with looking at the legalities that BJ was asking about as far as Galloway. And I'm okay with going, looking for a part-time. I don't know what the hours will be.
No, she just mentioned to me that it would be under 30 hours a week.
Which qualifies as part-time without the benefits.
Correct.
So, from there, I guess, I'm okay for the request of a part-time employee in the auditor's office. I'll make that motion.
Okay. I, I'll second it. Okay, discussion?
I didn't realize this was gonna be on the agenda, but as you guys are considering this, we discussed this last winter and I feel if we're looking at someone in real estate, I have two concerns. I have enough work on the GIS side that I could give this person hours of work, of things that would fit into the real estate, job description that I currently take care of. And I'm also concerned about finding the right individual and the training that's necessary to do the position, both legal and the software training. And having someone come in as an in-on-need basis is a dubious way to start off with someone, if someone needs to have GIS software training, because it's, it's a little bit of a beast to get started, as Tina can probably remember. Once the skillset's there, it's different, but it, it, there's definitely a learning curve. It's not just somebody who knows how to read legal descriptions. It's a good start, but there's more to it than that. But as you guys consider this as a part-time position, I would ask that you guys consider it as a full-time position in combination with the IT department, where I feel very confident that Jessica and I could work out the, the details of how that would work. I think there's just enough, if the right skillset person, there's definitely work that I could push off into this person for jumping, even if they're sitting up, so they don't have to be in my office to do this stuff that I'm thinking of, so.
And I do realize that we have kind of pushed off some things onto you over the years. So you're not just GIS and IT, so...
No, no. But yeah, there's enough GIS work, maintenance-type stuff that fits right into real estate that definitely I would not have any problem filling 10, 15 hours a week. So, I just want you to consider that as you think about how you might want to do this position.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, the request there is to make it now a full-time position and sharing the position between the two. I think, I think the consideration is there and I think it would be nice to work with Jessica since it will be her employee and some of those concerns. But at this time, I, I'm more curious on the part-time to see if it's warranted, how much time they're gonna put up there and fill in, and if we still need to fill in the voids. But this person, I, I hope you would work with Jessica as well as everything you just mentioned and take that into consideration.
I mean, if Jessica's, you know, it would maybe be, there's busier times. I mean, because I know there are deadlines for, you know, and timeframes for drainage and for real estate duties. And it isn't just mapping, you know, with your real estate that you do. I understand that. And if there's time left over under the 30 hours, if that would work, but we could, I think it's something, it can kind of be tried on a, keeping it under the 30 hours, but also maybe, I mean, I'm open-minded to...
But your consideration is the person that's being hired.
I'm more concerned about the skillset of the person being hired, whether it's part-time or full-time. I think, well, maybe the right person's there. That's my, my concern is this.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and we can talk to Jessica and make sure that that's also maybe kept in mind. Okay. Donna, did you have a question?
You can always change a part-time to a full-time.
Correct.
Correct. That's correct, if the person is willing to work full-time.
But what she was...
And has the skillset.
Yes, that's what her request was.
Easier to hire a new part-tire than maybe it's the new full-time.
Maybe it would be a thought for you, Mica, to talk to Jessica as far as what she's thinking for hours, you know, what, and, I mean, between her and Tina as far as the time it's gonna take in that office and then see what the remainder would possibly be. Otherwise, yes, Donna, you're, you're right. We can always do that too. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Motion carried. Other business. Today we have Doug Morse with us from Hanson Family Hospital. He's the new Director of the Hospital and he would like to introduce himself. What?
Appointment to the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have it crossed off of my agenda. That was my error. It should have been to the Green Belt Home Care Board, so we'll get that on next week's agenda correctly. That was, that was my fault. So there is, currently the Board of Health has all the members it needs, so next week we'll have on there for the appointment of Green Belt Home Care Board members. So, with that, Doug?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I understand.
If you'd like to...
Thanks.
Stay there or stand, it's up to you.
I, yeah, if you don't mind, I'll sit here.
That's fine.
I appreciate the chance to be here today. This is my first meeting attending. I thought I'd just briefly introduce myself, then tell you a few things going on at the hospital, kind of what we're watching and doing. Just by way of background, thanks for the chance to be here. My name is Doug Morse. Lifelong rural Iowa resident, born and raised in Mason City. Parents thankfully are still living there and some family members. And my wife Anne and I just bought a home in Iowa Falls and just trying to get moved in, so it sounds like we're nearby. So, we have three adult children. Our last child's leaving for college here in a few weeks, so becoming empty nesters right on that brink. So, I appreciate the chance to do some regular reporting and conversations about the hospital because we're all very interested in making sure it succeeds. So, what I thought I would do is kind of give you an overall summary and then a few things that we're working on. Overall, I'd like to report and let folks know our financial picture is sound. We are gonna be reporting a gain from operations for last year. So we have terrific ability to pay the obligations necessary as it stands today. Now, there are things we're watching as every business is watching. And as I was sitting here thinking, what I'd like to offer up is there's some things we have to deal with before they deal with us. And several trends that we're seeing in healthcare and rural healthcare. One is the shift from staying overnight in beds to doing stuff during the daytime. And so, if you hadn't seen it already, we're working a lot on wellness activities and we launched the 3D mammography service, which is a game changer. A lot of us in the room, myself included, have immediate family members who have dealt with breast cancer. 3D mammography is a whole new game changer for detection. So I wanted to encourage you and let everybody know that's happening at Hanson Family Hospital. You can make an appointment. We've been busy. So, that's one thing we've been working on. We're excited about that and encourage people to make an appointment for 3D mammography. Attracting and keeping providers is a major situation for rural Iowa, so we're recruiting, trying to bring another, a couple more doctors and a mid-level provider. You may have seen a thing, we're trying to get everybody's help called Dollars for Doctors. If you have a family member, friend, or somebody who might be interested in coming, refer them to us and we'll ask you to be recruiter and offer a cash payment if they sign and come and practice. And what we're trying to do is get everybody's help to recruit doctors. Little pop quiz. How many towns in Iowa are looking for a doctor right now? Anybody have a guess? A lot? 93.
Really?
93. So we're looking for everybody's help. And that's why that idea is, you could basically be a recruiter for us, because we'll follow up on any names. So nieces, nephews, cousins, families, friends who are family medicine doctors, bring them back to Iowa. Last thing I wanted to mention, because I'll, any chance I get... Last thing I wanted to mention, cause I'll, any chance I get, the, the other major thing we're concerned about or watching carefully is the impact this is having on healthcare. Because this and the computer is another game changer. How people get their care and what it means is remarkable. It's also spawning new competitors to our hospitals and clinics. And so for what I would call my kids who are in their twenties, this is their life for healthcare. That's different for us who didn't come up that way. So I think the biggest thing I wanted to offer up today, and then I'll just keep the conversation going, we're working on wellness and activities, 3D mammography falls in that. We're trying to recruit like crazy. And then the last piece is, I'm gonna ask folks here in the county and everywhere, expect us to be making changes. Why? Because our world is changing, so we're gonna have to change too to serve as customers. So we have some other things we have in mind that we're trying to build and we want input, but we're gonna try to have a countermeasure to these forces. And, and people should expect us to look different each and every day because everything else does, and so we're trying to keep up with that. So I'm, I'm very excited in my role, starting here. For example, the folks who use Hanson Family Hospital do surveys, our surveys through our clinics and whatnot are 90th percentile, and I'm happy about that, but there's always improvements to make. So if you don't mind, I'll come on a regular basis and answer questions or tell you what we're doing and kind of get people involved in the county and answer about anything I can, or I'll look it up. So that's my report for today and I'll try to have some things formalized for next go around, but those are the things I wanted people to be aware of right now.
Good.
That sounds great and I would love a report.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe like we're thinking, maybe like every month, come after a board meeting with the things we have going and what we're watching and the changes and something like that. I'd really appreciate some time on it. That'd be great.
Yep. That'd be great for us too.
We would appreciate that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And welcome to Hardin County.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're really excited.
Good. Well, we'll look forward to hearing from you.
And you can tell the rest of the family, we are a good county.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Any other business? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.